Welcome to IPJ the Podcast where we explore current events and policies shaping California's Central Valley. My name is Matthew Gonzalez, and in today's show, we're going to discuss the Los Manos City Council's distribution of a $10 million ARPA fund, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. These were funds that were given to the states that were to be given down to local counties, cities, and municipalities throughout the states to help recover from the COVID pandemic, unemployment benefits, government functions, other areas that the people needed funding to recover from. So we're going to discuss a little bit about that, but first I want to jump into something else that kind of touches on Los Manos as well as the entire county of Merced, Central Valley and California for that matter. It's the inability of the state bar to actually act on behalf of, on behalf of the people or on behalf of the courts to ensure that only qualified officers of the court represent people in court as lawyers. So basically, the bar, the California State Bar, is the one that you would go to to make a complaint against an attorney. Let's say that an attorney told your wife that in order to represent you, they don't want money, but they are willing to accept sex and meth.
Why, why me? Like, why can't you, why can't I send somebody else? Because when I try to play into his games and tell, okay, well, what if it takes to show your face in court? Like, when are you going to be there? How much do I need to give you? He says, I want two plus you. That's $200 plus me. And I said, okay, like, how do I know you're not going to burn me again? You didn't show up in court already once. I said, okay, I'll give you the $200 before court and you get the rest of the deal after court. He says, no, I want it in advance. Last Thursday, we had court, they gave us two weeks to figure out what the law scope. And so, so it was a week, so this will be a week. Okay. So they gave us a week and then we went back to court and the judge says, well, did you get a hold of your attorney? Why isn't he here? And I said, you know what? Let me show you why he's not here. And she read the messages and she was so mad. She had me forward them to her, to pictures. And the parole officer Lee that just represents the court, not none of our case, but he was there on other cases. He followed me out of court and he told me, you, you are one brave woman for stepping forward with these allegations.
Now, you might also know the courthouse has a Filasco name there in Los Manos as well. Well, that's the father or the adopted father of Dominic Filasco. So Dominic Filasco was found to have been doing not only these things that I spoke about, but many other inscrupulous things. And many of them were against the law. We don't know for a fact, but it seems as though Filasco then decided to turn on some people he was dealing with in a corrupt way as Dominic Filasco was on the school board. And him and a gentleman by the name of Greg Opinski and another person, I guess Tommy Jones. All these people somehow collaborated to basically get contracts to Opinski where Opinski would pay, kick them back money. And these contracts, you know, Opinski Construction, I believe it was, would get these contracts and build and make a lot of money. But the corruption in that is that other companies have no ability to gain these contracts. When you filter all the contracts just to one buddy, one friend of yours, because you have the power to do so, that's corrupt. And it takes away from the benefit to others as well. There's, there's many other companies in your local area or surrounding area that could benefit from those, those jobs. Keeping people employed for their own companies and so forth. So lots to be said there about Dominic Filasco. If you want to know more about it, check out this video here on my YouTube page. It'll tell you everything you need to know about the background with Dominic Filasco. Now let me get into the interview with an amazing writer, journalist. His name is Robert Hanson. He has recently joined the great team at the Sacramento Observer. Please go over there, like, love their page, get into their stories, especially Mr. Hanson. He has the ability to help spread the voice of the voiceless like we try to do here at IPJ the Podcast. Because there's so many stories out there of corruption, of people being victimized by their governments, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's their judicial system. There's many, many ways that people's voices are not being heard. And people like Robert Hanson are doing their best to try to get those voices out there by writing these stories, by going on podcasts and talking to people like me, independent public journalists. So here's that interview. We'll wrap it up on the backside and discuss a little bit more about Los Manos and their ARPA situation as well. So watch this. Welcome, Robert. We really appreciate you being here on IPJ the Podcast again. You're a fantastic friend, a great writer, and I'm really excited about getting into this new story that you've brought to light. So welcome to the show.
Appreciate you having me always, always, Matthew. Thank you very much. And again, it's always a pleasure you take an interest in my work. So thank you for highlighting it.
Fantastic. Well, let's get right into it because the headline of this show, this story that you wrote. And if you have a chance and you're listening now, Google this, check out this story, read it, understand what's going on because this affects the entire state of California. The headline is leaked emails expose failures of state bar to discipline attorneys. So basically, the gist of this is that some leaked emails showed that the chairman of the Bar of California?
The chairman of the Board of Trustees.
And of the Board of Trustees?
Of the California State Bar.
Of the California State Bar. Okay, got it. And another person-
Who was Rupert Duran until literally two or three days ago.
Really?
Yeah, the Board of Trustees appointed a few more different trustees and reappointed the chairman as well as the vice chair, the former vice chair.
Is this a normal-
Brian Stallings, Brian Stallings, I believe, is the new chair, chairman of the Board of Trustees for the California Board, for California State Bar.
Is this a, is this a new or is this a normal transition?
Thank you for asking that. The California Supreme Court told me that Duran's term was up, so the new appointment was made. Kind of like, there's nothing to see here. However, if you looked at Duran's, and I believe you still could, his profile on the California State Bar, his term was set to expire at the end of 2026. So make of that what you will.
Now, and this leaked email also involved Chief Trial Counsel George Cardona, correct?
Correct. Also appointed in the midst of the Thomas Giardi scandal and with the intent to clean it up. He was the first one the Senate had, had to confirm to his appointment. And I think ever. They redid the rules that required the state legislature to confirm any appointments to Chief Trial Counsel and Executive Director.
And about, when was this adjustment in the rules made? Do you know when it was?
Twenty or twenty or 2021, whenever Cordona got appointed.
Relatively recent then.
Yeah.
Interesting. And then you go on to share some of this, these emails. And in it, the members representing the bar here today share with you the ultimate purpose here, which is to reform the disciplinary system to protect consumers in California, Duran had said. Yes?
He said in a meeting.
He said it in a meeting.
He said it at a public joint committee hearing, actually. And that's other statements that he's made in writings that he's put on the bar as well as given other. That's his, that's his statement, basically, yeah.
So is he trying to reform? So what are your leaked emails showing?
So there were, that was a complaint filed to the bar by an attorney. And that was the back and forth between the then chairman of the Board of Trustees, Duran, asking for, from Cordona, an update on the, that investigation to that complaint. And there's back and forth in there that shows how the bar handled that complaint, which they just, they totally ignored it. And most importantly, when the wrong email got to the complainant, they threatened him to destroy that document and email.
No.
So because why is the chairman of the board so, because he was also named in a lawsuit also against the bar, including this attorney, Kenneth Katans, right? It's a whole big cluster, but the complaint, it shows, the back and forth in the emails ultimately shows how Chief Trial Counsel and a chairman could communicate. And Leah Wilson said, even at that trust joint hearing that I was talking about in March, maybe May. Anyhow, she said it's a culture basically within the bar that needs to get changed. So changing out a couple of people here or there is not going to matter. There's a systemic problem throughout the bar and its failure to discipline attorneys and letting ones humongous thieves like Thomas Giardi get away with it.
So humongous thieves.
Not happening in a vacuum.
So humongous thieves, that, you know, it reminds me of the Murdoch case. I don't know if you followed any of that.
Just pled guilty to run a concurrent sentence on wire fraud and yeah.
So how are, because basically these attorneys-
That's in South Carolina, though. That's in South Carolina.
Right. But wouldn't you think that an attorney that is doing these alleged acts of basically stealing client money, right, would be-
I mean, it seems like the attorneys in California anyway, the attorneys that are able to manipulate the bar are those who pay them or have the money to, or who have the resources, like Giardi. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even, you know, sensationalizing it. Giardi, the LA Times found Giardi was bribing investigators and trial councils at the bar. And he'd been doing it for decades.
For decades. There you go.
Yeah, for decades. And so I've had numerous other professionals, prominent attorneys, professors, all say something very similar is to that the bar likes to go after less resourced attorneys. In some cases, the LA Times has even reported that they target minority attorneys, black attorneys, single attorney law firms. And these big law firms, these big prominent attorneys, these big divorce attorneys with the celebrity clients, these other, you know, big prominent plaintiffs' attorneys that make all this money for all these lawsuits. They're stealing from people.
So-
Maybe that, I'm just saying in general, like Giardi's not a one-off. Katans, right, seems like he has his own little playbook that he goes by to rip people off. But, you know, he keeps him in court over years and years and years and years and just drains him, trying to get people to settle. But the court allowed, the bar allows him to do that too, you know?
So my next question is, did you find out who is getting this money or-
That's the thing, I don't have any whistleblowers inside the bar, although I'm, you know, waiting for some. I'm looking for ways to connect with people inside the bar that are currently there, that are willing to say the right thing and stand up and do, do the right thing. But I haven't yet. And, you know, I'm just trying to set up meetings with people who are supposed to be able to take care of this. I tried to set up a meeting with Thomas Umberg, lead chair of the committee, the judicial committee in the Senate. So that hasn't happened yet.
Have you had any feedback from any, you know, political leaders? Has anybody from any political offices reached out and, you know, said, because this is huge. This is within our judicial system, whether, I don't know what type of law, because all these attorneys have different practices of law. So I don't know what type of law this is. Is it personal injuries?
There's no specific, there's no, I'm going to be, that's one of the things I'm going to do is going to disseminate the records that they have available and see if I can determine whether there's a prominent specialization of law kind of attorney, attorneys that stand out, whether are, there's civil attorneys or divorce attorneys, whether they're defense attorneys, whether they're plaintiffs' attorneys, you know, however. So, but I'll be, yeah, that's something I'm working on. But no, I think there's no I'm, I have a feeling that it's just kind of attorneys across the board that have the resources to take, take the bar into long litigation and they don't want to go after it. You know, if there's nothing corrupt going on, there's at least some, you know, negligence or some ineptitude, which neither are acceptable, so.
Well, if, if it's been allowed to go on for decades, then I would say it's more than ineptness because there are, you know, inability or the stupidity of one. Because they're, you know, allowing it to happen, right? I mean, this is after, over and over and over again. And I know, and I'm sure many of the people who are watching or listening know of attorneys who have had issues, maybe arrested on felonies, found guilty.
They just disbarred some guy finally after he got his fifth DUI. I can't remember his name, but fifth DUI, they finally did disbar on one of those, should be able to get disbarred, I thought.
Yeah.
So. Not to say, okay, one maybe suspended and then to get another shot or something like that perhaps, perhaps, but five? I mean,
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just way too much. That's where somebody who's supposed to be an officer of the court is actually taking advantage of the court, I would think. Because that person should be in jail. They shouldn't be practicing law. I think on the third one, it's a DUI, it's a felony, I believe, or something like that. I don't know. Anyway, if it's not, it should be.
Yeah. Like I said, they're just, they just don't do anything. They, the bar, at the end of the day, they're, they're also ran, it's ran by attorneys. And it's like any other self-participant, you know, market participant regulation, self-regulation. Banks can't do it, police can't do it, and lawyers can't do it. There, nobody can self-regulate. So the bar, rather than protecting the public, seems to have been operating for the last two or three decades. More attorneys that prey on the public. You know, most recently, I wrote about a class action lawsuit filed against the bar on behalf of clients that were ripped off by Thomas Giardi. It was reported by ABC News. It's been reported in law.com by another, you know, law journal. But I don't even see the LA Times come out with that, but I'm sure they did. But I mean, it's, it's a pretty big deal. There's like by five different cases, including the one Giardi's already being indicted on Chicago included in this class action lawsuit. Claiming the bar is culpable for allowing, like, I believe there's five different cases worth of plaintiffs that are in this class action against the California State Bar. To which they said they hadn't been served properly, which they have a whole game with that, but I'm not even going to go into it. But yeah.
Yeah, you know, something's got to get set up where these attorneys are more accountable. Because they really are the ones behind the curtain, pulling the levers. They know the laws, they know how to manipulate the laws and write the laws. And the political legislators, they, they sign the laws, they pass the laws, but the ones behind the scenes-
Lawyers too, man.
Huh?
You know how many of those are lawyer, of them are lawyers?
Well, yeah, yeah, right. Lawyers and real estate agents. So we need, we need some regular people in there too. So start thinking about that too, voting public. We need some regular Joes in there who know what it's like to have to put food on the table every day and live paycheck to paycheck. It's tough for us out here, so you know. Anyways, before I get into all that, this story is incredible. Please go and check it out. You can see it, like I said, the story is on the website at, is it 10?
The Davis Vanguard.
The Davis Vanguard. I see it's vanguard.org too, or davisvanguard.org.
Yeah.
Okay. You write some incredible, incredible stories. Go ahead.
Thanks, man. Did you, did you ever, did we ever follow up on Lieutenant Emily Foster? Because she got fired.
Yeah, can you want to give us a plug? What is the follow-up on, do you have some info on that?
My contact out there with, by you showed me that Foster indeed did get let go by the Merced Department, man, so. So that's, my work had to have done something.
Yeah, absolutely it did. Your work does a lot. You, you've got to understand, your work does, does a lot. And by the way, congratulations for your move into these Sacramento-
Sacramento Observer.
Observer. And the, just, you're, and man, I just see great things for you to come. And it's well deserved for a man who's just been done some incredible work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, it's people like you who put the voice of the voiceless out for those of us to hear so we can make very, very informed decisions at the ballot box. And we appreciate you, my brother. Robert Hanson, everybody, please go and check out his work on social media. Where can we find you?
You can find me on Twitter or X, whatever it's called, at RJHanson13. And my work is at Davis Vanguard and the Sacramento Observer.
Fantastic.
Robert J. Hanson.
And when you see the stories pop up in your feed, definitely click on them because there is some knowledge for consumption for the brain, for you to make good decisions. All right. Thanks again, Robert. We appreciate you coming on and talking about this story. And always welcome to come on board and talk about anything you got going on. Thanks again.
Pleasure being here as always.
All right, you said. A great interview with a great writer. Please, like I said, if you get a chance, go over to his page, like, subscribe, get to know some of the stories that he's writing over there. So like I was talking about earlier, ARPA. Los Manos, you got some issues. So not only do we have issues with, you know, continuing to allow attorneys who should be nowhere near a courthouse thanks to the bar. But you're also have this problem with ARPA. Now, like we were saying, Los Manos was granted almost $10 million for this particular program. And they, like all other counties, municipalities, cities, they have the opportunity to use that money in a couple of different ways. So this money has to be used in these ways, can be used in other ways. One of those ways, like I said, is unemployment relief. It's also for COVID pandemic relief. It's for also helping small businesses recover. They lost a lot during the COVID-19 shutdown. And it's to help governments recover. Now, something that was pointed out in a podcast that I saw on YouTube, and I highly recommend you guys go check out this podcast. I'm pulling up the name of it right now, so if you see me messing around here, I apologize. But the, it's really important, this, this gentleman who is on this podcast, his name is Graciano Rubio. He is the owner, owner, I believe of Isabel CrossFit? Or he's owner of a CrossFit gym there in Los Manos. And he went on a podcast and was asked a little bit about the ARPA situation. Take, take a look at this and then we'll, we'll talk about it on the side.
So what had happened is the city got $10 million of COVID money. Now, with that COVID money, they got certain requirements. So the whole, the whole purpose of the bill federally was to support public health and to mitigate the damage of the shutdown. Now, the city decided to do, to give 1 million of that to businesses and to keep 9 million for themselves. Hold on, telling me that you guys had 90% of the impact from COVID, the city government? So we haven't even gone into that part of it where it's like, hey, you guys are totally full of shit.
So you got a little brief understanding of the situation there. Please go to that channel, like them, subscribe and review the entire story there. They did a great job and as well as Graciano did a great job discussing and explaining more about what's going on. So one of the things that he talked about was the rad cards. Now, these cards, he said, were out there to help people. They would give them like $100, I believe, and it was supposed to go out to 10,000 people, $100,000. And apparently it, it didn't go, it didn't get that far. I don't think very many people got it or something like he said. And so it was a bust. Not much went out there. They tried a couple of other things, but they didn't work out as well. One thing they didn't try out though is by, you know, giving money to the local businesses that had to stay open during the pandemic. Now, if you recall, Los Manos government, they were closed. You weren't going there and getting into the building. You weren't able to get a hold of anybody. Most of people working from home, if they were working at all. A lot of government was completely shut down. So I don't understand how the local governments needed any much of any money to weather the pandemic because they didn't have to weather much of anything. They were shut down. People were furloughed, people were put on unemployment, people were paid. If anything, the city government saved money, right? No, no electricity, didn't have to provide a lot of different things. So, you know, gas for the trucks to be on the road, to repair things, yada, yada. All those funds were not spent, so they saved a lot of money, actually. So why wasn't that ARPA money distributed to the people who needed it most, the business owners? That's a question that needs to be raised at the Los Manos City Council. It has been raised and several people of Los Manos have tried to get the city council to understand that that money could be better spent within the community rather than the, the city taking in, you know, almost the entire amount to themselves. And they've tried to speak up. Check, check this out at the Los Manos City Council meetings.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I've read our agenda and our consent agenda. I've noticed some might have legal, legal or procedural or budgetary challenges that require public discussion, debate, or open review. Please honor our request to pull these items for discussion on a separate vote or possible actions. I've done some research. I've gotten some of the answers for your items that are on your consent agenda, but I still have questions on a few of them. The first one is item E. Why would we take away a benefit from our new or internal promotions in our police department, fire department, or public works? I don't understand why. Item number I, why have we pulled out of something that has, was set in 2017 and funded? The pathway to Merced College. Item K, change order in the amount of $886,000. This is more than a, oops, the price of tar went up. The other one is item N. Does this not require a change in the city ordinances for outside dining? I've provided you an article about consent agendas. It matches conversations I've had with other cities in regards to what qualifies as something for a consent agenda. Thank you for your time.
Now, consent agendas, this has been brought up, as you saw. The city council basically can lump a lot of different things that are, you know, normal city council business. Like, you know, paying an ongoing contract or paying something or, you know, approving the payment of the trash, you know, what? Just normal mundane stuff that is not controversial and that's not- and that that's not need debate. But you can't put ARPA funding or even a 1.8 million dollar payment to city manager into, um, consent agenda. You can't. These things are too controversial and they require debate. They require, uh, public scrutiny. The public has to have some time to digest what you're doing as the city council. And then they need to be able to, um, give input in regards to this decision that you are going to, trying to make, uh, one way or another, whether you're going to approve or disprove, but you're trying to make a decision. And it is, like I said, controversial. So in respect, you're actually violating the consent agenda rules that say consent agenda items are for mundane and normal everyday business. Those items are not. So yeah, Los Mano City residents, you have the right to complain, uh, and grievance to your government regarding the consent agenda and them throwing items on there that are not the normal business. Um, things, uh, that require your input should be, uh, put out uh, in the regular, uh, agenda and be discussed by all. So that's something to be aware of. Now, it's really important that, uh, Los Manos, uh, residents also take a look at this, uh, uh, great stories that were put out by the West Side Express. Uh, I, this is my first time, um, getting to know them, a wonderful person, human being out there in Los Banos. A friend of the show, friend of me, uh, of me, uh, my friend. Uh, I don't want to give their name out though, but they turned me on to this, uh, West Side Express and whoever's doing this, I, I want to just, um, say thank you for getting these two stories out there. Um, it's very important, um, when the people's, uh, you know, for the people to get the information that can help them make the right decisions at the ballot box because people need people in places of power that can help them, um, improve their lives, um, and not make their lives more difficult through corruption. Okay? So this, uh, this friend of mine turned me on to these stories and this, this is amazing. Check this out. Um, if you get a chance, go over there and check these, uh, people out. They seem to be doing some really good, uh, stories over there. Um, these two that I want to bring up, the first one is some are now comparing Los Banos to City of Bell. And that's not a compliment by, uh, Mike Dunbar, uh, posted September 22nd, 2023. Mike goes on to discuss, um, the city of Bell and what happened there. Uh, my apologies. That's, uh, my dog who decides to bark, uh, abruptly at any time. Um, but he discusses, uh, the city of Bell and what happened there. And honestly, what happened there was the citizens of Bell, California stopped paying attention to their city government. They were fine and content to go on their nine to five jobs. Understand it. You got a lot of things going on with the kids. Got, uh, bills, you got all kinds of stuff. You want to watch your favorite TV shows. Get it. I understand. But you gotta pay attention to your city government. If you don't, it's going to turn into Bell. And basically you had, uh, a city administrator back in 2011 paying himself about 1.5 million dollars. Uh, a- annually and, um, his pension. So he'd get an annual, um, retirement of $1 million. Um, there was a lot of other, um, bad things going on with money and misappropriation of funds and everything else. And some people went to jail out there. Um, and I've I've, you know, I, I find it kind of, um, funny because the, the city of Los Manos is, is, it's a small city. It, it has a lot of great, uh, things about it. Um, it's agriculture, it's people, it's food. Oh my gosh. Um, and the hospitality, uh, good, just good people. And you've got a, uh, city council that is trying to just, uh, run rampant and lock shot over, over you and they're, they're misappropriating your money and taking advantage of you not paying attention to them. And one of the things that they've done is the, um, city of Los Banos, uh, they had a, um, decision to give its fired, then rehired city manager an unprecedented job protection, which requires a five to zero vote in order to terminate his contract. That and he gets 1.8 million of your taxpayer dollars. This guy must be amazing. This guy must be like, he's got awards for civic duty and, and this guy's must have led so many city departments and just, man, this guy's got to be incredible, right? Well, hold on here. This guy's got not a shred of experience at leading a city department. None. He, he has no experience. And when people have tried to contact him, including us, there's no reply. There's no response. He doesn't want to talk to anybody because he doesn't want to be held accountable for what he's attempting to do. Now, why, why would the city council do this? Why would they give this guy a, a job that he, you know, he doesn't deserve? It doesn't make any sense. Um, also uh, this guy, Panero, uh, February to rehire Panero and give him a one, a 1.8 million dollar. I just don't understand. I'm just like baffled. Sorry. It's the last panels. Come on. What are you guys doing? You, you're, you're going to allow these people to, to just run right over you like that? No, you need to get down to your city council or you need to get on the phone. You need to get on the email system. You need to write, call, go down there in person and say enough is enough. This is not happening in our city. You are not doing this to us. And if you need to kick those sons of bitches out of that office, get them out of there because they are obviously there for one reason. And that's for themselves, not for you or your community. And that's the wrong way to lead a government. Now, cities routinely, uh, reach settlements, uh, with, uh, outside parties like, you know, what happened with Panero. Um, but the payments usually arise from legal filings or involve disputes over services or goods. In this case, there was no lawsuit and no services or goods provided. Um, there was only a letter from a San Jose lawyer alleging a wrongful firing and harm to Panero. Okay? So there was no actual, um, you know, Panero filing, uh, a suit, uh, the, the evidence was, uh, presented and a, um, you know, wrongful termination justification or, uh, you know, um, finding was made by the court. Sorry, I couldn't run the right word. Uh, so, um, Indian Insurance Company, uh, the city's employment liability insurance provider said in a January ninth, 2023 email to city attorney William Vaughn, that the city's 1.8 million payment would not be covered because it was made outside of the defense council's recommendation and without our consent. So the city council there in Los Manos, I, they don't know what they're doing. Okay. You have to go and you have to, um, speak with your attorneys. You have to speak with, uh, others who can have you do the right things. And what they're doing is they're getting the, um, feedback from the right people, but they're not listening. And this is a great example with the insurance company telling them, no, this was not adjudicated. There was no formal finding made that he was wrongfully terminated. And so we are not paying no 1.8 million dollars. So the council, two of whom publicly call themselves longtime friends of Panero, voted to pay the entire amount from the city's general fund. The 1.8 million dollar payment to Panero represented roughly a tenth of the city's unallocated general funds at that time and was nearly 10 times his original annual salary. 10 times. Are you still, are you still sitting at home, Los Manos? I mean, geez. Uh, you need to be down there banging down that door. Where, where's my money? That's your money. That's your general fund. Uh, for context, the 1.8 million was more than the city's to 2021 and to 2022 budget for its entire administrative staff. So the entire administrative staff was paid 1.5 million. The entire administrative staff. One human being was paid 1.8 million and he has less experience than every one of those administrative staff members. Less. It was also more than, uh, the city spent, uh, on community and economic development and more than it paid for capital outlays for the police department and the streets departments combined. I, I encourage you, um, Los Manos, read this article in the West Side Express, um, and, um, you know, give them a like. This is a great story. I think this guy did a great job. Um, some great research here. Um, now mayor, uh, the mayor is not, uh, discussing much of it. Um, he's redirected some questioning, uh, uh, Lanera or Panero's, uh, lawyers, uh, lawyer insists the firing lacked cause, um, when he was originally fired. Um, but again, the guy has no insurance, I mean, no, um, no experience. So things were going awry, uh, there in the city for you guys. They had to get rid of the guy. Okay? But because he has friends on the, um, on the board, on the city council, I should say. Um, they're going to give him 1.8 million of your dollars because they made him cry. Poor Panero. Poor, poor Panero. You know, um, again, read this story, uh, Mike Dunbar, um, he, uh, yeah, he's an ex, um, Sunstar a reporter. We're, you know, uh, we're not really big on the corporate journalists, but, um, it was funny how when I said that, uh, we were going to look into this and start, uh, you know, documenting what's going on there in Los Manos, that suddenly, um, a week or so later, they come out with this in-depth story. Good job, Mike. And if, uh, you did it because, uh, you heard something about me or your company did, bad job. Y'all should be doing it on your own. But if you didn't, you did this on your own, kudos to you. So please read this one. And then there's another one. I want you to, uh, take a look at it. Recently came out as well. And this one has, uh, some more good reporting about what's going on, um, the, with this, um, awarding, let's see where, there we go. This, this, this guy's experience. And I think this should be a telltale sign for you people to get out there and to stop this, put a stop to this ASAP. Los Manos city managers inexperience is an issue. So is needing a five to zero vote to fire him like we discussed before. So this guy in 2021, Josh Panero, was not included on a list of names compiled by a recruitment firm paid to find Los Manos a new city manager. When two city council members asked that Panero's name be added, the recruitment firm declined. Again, this is a great story by Mike Dunbar at the West Side Express. Please give them their, their due and give them a like, uh, and credit that they are uh, telling these stories that need to be told that they haven't done in the past, but it's good to see that they're starting to step up. Just be careful because some of these reporters, uh, from the Merced Sunstar and other McClatchy group reporters, they're trying to get into, um, your computers and give you the news and information. Um, but they screwed up a lot and they're the reason why public journalism came to the forefront. That's why I first started reporting the news as a public journalist in 2013 and was humiliated, told that it would never happen, uh, never work. You can't be a public journalist. Uh, you can't do things on Facebook. No one's going to listen to that. Well, you can see the results since and it is huge. Um, so be careful with these, uh, corporate journalists. They're basically, you know, they stick to a certain norm that they don't tell certain stories because they don't want you to know, or certain people don't want you to know. And in order for these journalists to maintain their relationships, to get other stories that they want to get, they will cover up or won't, uh, report certain things. And it's time and time again, it's happened. So watch out for them. I always tell you, stick to your public journalists, uh, Merced, uh, Golden Wire News, uh, Merced Daily. Uh, there's other great local independent people out there bringing you news and information that is factual and that you can count on. Now there are some out there in the game that are still learning and they're trying to understand and how to get the hang of it and how to do it right. So give them, you know, the, give them some due, uh, but they're trying. And so we want to also, I'll, I'll tell you briefly before I get back into this, we want to develop, uh, I'm in the works of developing a nonprofit that's going to help. Um, basically we're going to be awarding our independent, uh, public journalists, um, based on their stories, on their, uh, website development, their, uh, social media presence, um, several different categories. Um, and we want to do a once a year, um, dinner where we do these, um, awards and, uh, give out, um, hopefully some monetary awards. Uh, it's, uh, going to be a nonprofit. So, um, look for that. And it's something that's going to help you as the, um, viewer, the person who's seeking true and accurate and factual information. It'll give you a resource to really go to and, and identify, uh, you know, is this a good resource for me, uh, to get local news and information in my local area? So look for that. It's going to be really, really informative and I think it's going to be a great time too. And it gives us a chance to give back to our independent public journalists because a lot of them do not make a dime. They are out there. As soon as they get off work, boom, they get out there. They start, you know, gathering information, gathering stories, talking to locals, um, and then developing these stories and putting them online for you to understand what's going on in your community. Kudos to them. So we look forward to doing something for them soon. Back to this, uh, Los Manos piece now, uh, West Side Express, Mike Dunbar. This guy, um, Panero is the center of our attention. Again, he was receiving 1.8 million dollars from the city of Los Manos. Uh, because he was fired for being inept at doing his job and he was rehired, uh, because he has friends on the city council and he cried a lot and his attorney wrote a letter. So they've hired him back. Um, so basically his background is there were formal complaints from city employees who dealt directly with Panero when he was first hired. Abrupt resignations of two of the city's seven department heads, the departure of dozens of city employees, a threatening letter from Panero's lawyer, but no lawsuit, an accusation within the letter that someone in city government was guilty of something requiring whistleblower protection for Panero that remains unexplained. A controversial payment of 1.8 million of taxpayer dollars going to Panero on a four to one council vote. An unprecedented three to one council decision to require a five to zero vote to terminate the city manager's contract. Unprecedented. The imminent departure of two more department heads and now complaints from within city departments that Panero remains unfamiliar with city codes and the requirements of his job. I mean, dude, uh, let me speak to Panero directly. You dumbass. If I was hired for a city job and I didn't know how to do the job and I got fired and miraculously got rehired. From the time that I got fired to the moment I got rehired, I can damn well be sure that I would study everything I need to know about every city code I need to know and every responsibility of the job that I'm supposed to do. You didn't do that? The city manager is not just somebody who sits back and takes orders from somebody else. They are the city manager. You are in charge of all of it. You manage a city. Anyways, uh, of course, Panero doesn't respond for any comments or anything. Uh, the three councilmen, uh, council members um, that voted in, uh, June of 2022 to fire Panero have remained mostly silent about their decision. But the other two, Jones, mhm, and Lambert have, uh, mhm, and Lambert have, uh, spoken of the firing frequently. Jones called Panero's firing wrongful, though Panero's contract plainly stated that his employment was entirely at the discretion of the council majority. He said Panero was caught in a political, in a political crossfire without explaining the meaning. On social media, Jones said the, the council majority was hiding behind the Brown Act, a 70-year-old state law that prohibits officials from disclosing confidential information, including closed session personnel discussions. Lambert posted on his city council Facebook page that the firing was without cause, even though Panero's original contract did not require cause for termination. And most city attorneys recommend against providing any reasons for such a dismissal. Why? Well, you could screw up their chances for getting a job somewhere else. Duh. Uh, this, Las Manos, you're not, you're not a backwards ass county. You're a modern city. You're a, you're a, a, a well-established city. You are some smart people out there. So why is this idiocy allowed to happen in your great, great town? Uh, I don't think it's going to be allowed to happen after this. So I think after a few weeks here, you people are going to get engaged and you're going to get out there. We're going to start hearing how you guys are forcing your council members to do what is right. And even if that means you have to force them under threat of removal from office, do it. And if you have to remove them, do it too. It's, you know, you gotta take control of your government. Otherwise your government controls you. City managers are basically the equivalent of chief executive officers or CEOs in private business. While all city staff members report to the city manager, the city manager answers only to the council. So this guy has to have experience, but he has none. He's, uh, presiding over an organization with 180 employees, uh, when it's fully staffed, seven department heads and an annual budget of 110 million. His job includes oversight of everything from labor contracts to sewer systems to public safety and more. Oh, and yet this guy has no idea what he's doing. No idea. So another great story here by Mike Dunbar. I could go on and on about this, you guys, but I really encourage all of you to read it. Go through it piece by piece and then take action. You know, take action, uh, by holding your city council members accountable for their votes. Remove them if you have to, force them to get this Panero out of there. This is him right here, riding on a Los Manos Police Department vehicle. And he's got no experience. I mean, I, I don't know how you guys do this. It's, it's bewildering. So please read this, get involved, get, uh, you know, get out there and, um, make a difference because this guy should not be there. Uh, it's only going to hurt you and your community. Um, and with that being said, I want to wrap up, uh, today's show, um, with a dedication. A dedication to a man that I first met at, um, Sam Ash Music. And, um, he was, he was very well, um, in tune with the local musicians. They would come in, he knew them by name. And he, uh, he took me under his wing. Cause I didn't know much about Sam Ash Music. They have this way of looking up stuff he used, like this, uh, wildcard symbol and all kinds of, when you look up in their computer system. And he was, he was cool. He was cool. Brent, uh, Miller, Brent Joseph Miller, my brother. Now, if you didn't know, uh, Brent, Brent was, um, my first, uh, one of my first, um, co-hosts, uh, of, um, IPJ, the podcast. Uh, we started broadcasting together back in, um, late 2020.
On the next IPJ, the podcast with Matt and Brent airing August 16th.
Yeah, we got a special guest for you, D Cat, Dwayne Cornelius.
What? Is he coming?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This gentleman, this specific gentleman has probably got me into more magical recording rooms and whatnot. Superstars, uh, rubbing elbows and working with, you know, probably single-handedly more than anyone else in, in the world.
Wow. And you got him. You got the interview. Wow. You're amazing. You're amazing. And, um, it was awesome. It was awesome. Unfortunately, we didn't continue, um, together with the show, a lot of stuff going on, you know, but, um, uh, he went on and did some great things, um, as he always did. Brent Miller was an amazing musician. He was a guitar player. He was, uh, an amazing friend, an amazing engineer. Uh, he had a great ear for sound. And he had a great way with one-liners. In fact, I'm going to show you some video of what I mean right here. This is my boy Brent and I just messing around, fooling around one night. Check this out.
Welcome to the Brett Miller Show. Yeah. Welcome to the Brett Miller Show. Yeah. Who are you? What you doing? How's it going? How you doing? My name is Brent Miller. It's alright, alright. Yeah, you're a good thing, man. Eight eight, carry money, hot honey. Oh, yeah. You got this thing go Friday. It ain't Monday. It ain't Tuesday neither, no Wednesday, there's the one between Thursday and Saturday. Don't be a Friday, yeah. See you then. My name is Brent Miller from the band War Dog. Go check out hclubent.com. It's club clothing.
Oh, man. I'm trying like hell not to cry and I'm not going to cry, but, um, he was like a brother to me. Uh, I would, uh, you know, work productions, I'd get jobs and as a producer and, uh, he would be one of the first guys I'd call. He knew people. Um, for instance, um, a lot of the celebrities that I was able to get for the, um, the Marine Corps event, uh, that we did out, um, with the Chris family to give back on Super Bowl Sunday. He was able to bring, uh, Chris Poland to the table from Megadeth. He, I knew a lot of people. We brought D Cat to the show. We did a great interview with D Cat, Battle Cat, Corrupt, all these guys, Daz, Snoop Dogg. I mean, he worked with Snoop. And watched the videos with him. He talks about it in there. And, um, so Brent, Brent Miller is one of those people that you don't really shit. He's one of those people you don't really know too much about, but you've heard. You've heard his, his flavor on mixes. You've heard his flavor in other artists. My wife and I had the opportunity to attend his wedding and it was beautiful. Oh, his, his wife is gorgeous, gorgeous young lady. And the love in her eyes for him just melted me. You always, you always want the people that you care most about to have people with them that are going to love them just as much, if not more than you do. And I saw that in his wife's eyes. It was beautiful. I, I got a call from his mother a couple of weeks ago. It informed me my brother passed. And it hurts. It hurts because I know his wife. It's hurting. It was mother. It's hurting. It was sister Denise's hurt. Oh, sorry. I'm trying not to cry. But I love that man. We went to NAMM. Uh, if you don't know NAMM show, NAMM shows, uh, big event every year where musicians get together to check out new gear and and we had a blast. He went with my wife and I and our son. He always referred to our son as his nephew and rather so. My son grew up around Brent. We always knew we could rely on Brent if we needed him around our son. Yeah, I mean, God, I just why did I lose him? Why did his wife lose him? Why did this world lose him? We needed Brent. We needed his craziness. We needed his laughter. So in his memory, this show is dedicated to him. I'm sorry for the sadness at the end of this show, but to pull it around to some positivity because that's what it's really all about. You gotta remember that, uh, my belief is, is that, you know, we, we live many lives. And so my brother Brent, he'll be back. Of course, it's another life. But it's a circle. Positives. Wow. Positives I learned from Brent is that I could do certain things. Was that I had the ability. And I just had to believe in me. And he helped me to understand that. Brent was a, was a great man and I will miss him for the rest of my life. He left a good positive mark on our show. He left a good positive mark on my life, his wife, his family and then, I think, on the world. And for all of his friends. You know who you are? I know many of you. You know what I mean when I say church, church? Godspeed, my brother. Godspeed. All right. Well, uh, poof. Sorry about wrapping it up on a, on a rough note there, but it's important, I think, to really, um, uh, you know, share what, uh, my brother's life because he was an amazing man, Brent Joseph Miller. And, uh, so that's going to do it for this, uh, first episode back. Uh, this is our, um, third season. We're prepared. We're going to have a few more shows, um, coming up. And hopefully we can keep it going for a little longer this time. Um, it gets a little difficult sometimes in life, you know, because I don't do this for a living. This isn't how I make money. This is just something I do on the side to help get, uh, news and information out. But I will be putting full force, money and effort into our profit. Now we'll be honoring independent public journalists, independent journalists, information that you need to know most so that you can make informed decisions out of that. Well, IPJ, the podcast, I'm Matthew as always. Thanks for watching and we'll see you soon.